Good evening. I'd like to call the September 9th, 2014 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Christensen. Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
All right, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard. First up, we have the August 29th, 2014 minutes. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Unless there are any corrections, I would move the August 26th, 2014 regular session minutes.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Christensen absent.
Mayor Coombs, we do not have any revisions or submission of documents.
Okay, great. Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
Okay, I guess we've got a special report by Sean Lewis. There's some members from the audience here. They're just here for support. That are member investors from the, yeah, LAEC chamber. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I want to, tonight, just do a quick review of a couple of things, three different reports that you all have seen over the past year, and then talk about one document, an implementation matrix that goes along with those documents that you haven't seen but I'd like to review tonight. So, just to kind of preview what we're going to be talking about, just that background that I mentioned, also a review, just a brief review of highlights of some of those sections, and then that implementation matrix. So, the first question that what we're going to be talking about is the Advanced Longmont Plan. It was formerly known as the Target Industry Analysis, and so as part of trying to brand that study and that analysis, we're calling that the Advanced Longmont Report. So, what it is, is an evaluation of our workforce, infrastructure, existing industry, and our entrepreneurial approach. It's also an assessment of our competitive advantages over, you know, competing cities, not only in Colorado, but obviously the United States, and also really a blueprint for economic development to help attract businesses here, to retain our businesses, and help those businesses expand, and some action steps, both long-term and short-term. These are the Economic Development Partners that, as a result of this plan, have, this list of partner organizations has actually expanded to include St. Brain Valley Schools, because as our consultant pointed out to you all before, with the Innovation Center and all the STEM work that they're doing, they're a critical part of the, our economic development efforts. We've really tried to reach out to other organizations that are incorporating them, such as the Tinker Mill and others that are working in the innovation area. In terms of public involvement, we've had 13 steering committee members. I want to thank Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore for being, serving on that steering committee. We've had 57 local companies and organizations that you can see a list up there below, and then over 100 participants that have participated in either focus groups or public comment periods throughout the last year. The goals for Advanced Longmont were to assist Longmont in recruiting and retaining quality businesses, to improve the local business climate, which the city of Longmont is largely responsible for that business climate, increase entrepreneurial opportunities, and optimize the organizational effectiveness of economic development efforts. So, the process, again, just to kind of take you through that process, we really started this with an RFP, solicited firms, selected a firm, which you remember Avalanche Consulting, they presented to you all four times over the last year, and the three main presentations that they made were the market assessment, and that was where we, you know, went over a lot of data and information on the community, stakeholder input, all those focus groups were in that session, the market assessment, and then a SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats summary. Next, a couple of months later, I believe in November, they came back and presented the Target Industry Analysis, which really looked at clusters of types of industries that we have in Longmont, and also the recommendations that they have for which target industries we should go after based on the data that they use. Also, as a side note to that particular section with that presentation, was the organizational assessment, which as you recall, led to some significant organizational changes. So, this plan is certainly not sat on the shelf yet, and we don't expect it to sit on the shelf in the future. We have already used that to make significant changes and anticipate more. We also had a reverse site selection, which we'd be glad to share with you all. That is not in the report. It was simply like a pretend, if you will, prospect that came to town and looked at the community, judged our response to that prospect, and that's actually a separate document. We'll be glad to share that. It was kind of an addition to the contract that we did from the beginning, but it was not part of the, exactly, the plan. And finally, the implementation plan was the portion that was presented, I believe, in April to you all, or, excuse me, that would be March to you all, which included the vision, the goals, the objectives, all the strategies and tactics, and then the most recent document that we as a partner group have come up with is an implementation matrix, which is what we'd like to show you tonight, or at least just, it's in your background materials and review. I'm not going to go over all of these, but you can see these are some of the strengths that were identified that Longmont has, you know, the proximity to University of Colorado, CSU, DU, you know, all sorts of things, the relatively low cost of living compared to some of our neighboring communities, our K-12, et cetera. Some challenges which I'll spend a little more time on, brand awareness, talked a lot about the fact that we need a more cohesive marketing strategy for the community across all organizations, but with LAEC really leading the charge to try to create a new marketing strategy. So, I know that their plan is for the new president, when he or she is hired to, you know, that to be one of their first tasks. Also, that we really have not had a shared vision for economic development, so we'll show you, and you may recall, the vision that was presented to you all a few months ago. Also, the limited relationships with CU and CSU, this one we can't do much about, but lack of direct connectivity to I-25, and how do we turn that into opportunities, even though it can be a challenge at times. And then some outdated infrastructure you see there, limited availability of Class A, limited social activities for young adults and high school kids, and then relatively high cost of housing, despite the fact that their assessment showed that there, we do have diversity in the housing, but that it is relatively high compared to many parts of the country. So, this was the vision for economic development that you all reviewed and, at the time, liked, so we'd be glad to get your input on that as well, though. Situated at the intersection of high-tech and manufacturing, Longmont exemplifies the best of the front range, offering a high quality of life, skilled workforce, and business-friendly climate while maintaining, while remaining affordable and welcoming. These were the target industries that were presented back in November. There were really four main categories, advanced technology, bioscience, creative arts and culinary, and professional services and IT. There were a number of subcategories under those, and the report, if you saw, noted in that section, really digs into each of these subcategories in how we can strategically place ourselves to really market and attract many of these target industries, a lot of which we already have some of, more of others, and so we're very pleased with the work that they did there. The one that I know Councilmember Moore and I spoke a lot about was creative arts and culinary. That's a little unusual to find in a target industry analysis, but you can see there the types of things that they're talking about. Many of those can be primary employers and primary jobs that bring significant dollars, as do our current breweries and distilleries that bring that money into the community, but also make the community a higher quality of life with downtown redevelopment, things like the Butterball, et cetera, are mentioned in that. So, moving on to the strategic goals and observations, these are really the six different tabs in the spreadsheet that we sent in the council comm, and I sent again today, that are in the, outlined in the matrix. Those include marketing, business climate, education and workforce, entrepreneurship and innovation, infrastructure and quality of life. So, those are the five, six categories that the consultant team, as well as we as an economic development partnership, really looked at, what do we need to do in these areas to really strengthen our position in terms of economic development, to attract companies and to help retain and expand our existing companies. So, I just want to review what the implementation matrix is, and some of which what it, what it isn't. It is really an internal document that's used by all partner organizations as a roadmap for activities, specific activities that are related to economic development. So, some of those that you see in the matrix are very specific, some of them are more broad, but all of them, as we'll show you in a moment, have a timeframe, who's on first, and then who the supporting organizations are. It's also a short, medium, and long-term action plan, again, for internal use. It's not something that, you know, we're going to be marketing ourselves with or anything like that. It's also a means by which partners can hold one another accountable. So, we have, all of the organizations that I mentioned before, those with boards of directors, have already approved that implementation matrix. There were a number of changes made with each of those approval processes, so tonight, we expect that you all will have suggestions and comments and changes to that implementation matrix, just as the other organizations have. And with those, by agreeing to this plan, this matrix, we hope to be able to hold one another accountable and really start checking off these different action steps so that we can make progress towards being a top-notch economic development organization and community. And it's a report that will be, we will be doing a follow-up report to you all at every, excuse me, once a year at council meetings, and that'll be made both to the LAEC board as well as to city council, to talk about progress with regard to that, and that's something that we've agreed to as a partner, partner organizations. And then lastly, that next-to-last bullet, the progress on those action steps is going to be reviewed each month at the monthly staff-partner-organization meeting. And so, as you know, that's been an important venue by which we communicate things that are going on. We really want to become more focused in what are we doing, what actions are we taking to be more successful in economic development. So, again, this is not for you to be able to read specifically, simply to show you that each one of the tabs has its own set of goals, kind of high goals, and then very specific individual action steps within each one of those goals. And as you can see, there's a group that's responsible, solely responsible, well, I should say primarily responsible, and then the supporting organizations. And again, all of these organizations have agreed to these, whether or not they're a supporting organization. Some groups have taken their name off of certain items, and some have added, and so we have really consensus for the first time in who's going to be working on these items, and then a start and finish date that we're targeting. But again, we anticipate this to change significantly, literally on a month-to-month basis, but certainly on an annual basis, as needs change, as we see the need to back off of certain areas and move forward in others. So, what we're asking for tonight is the potential actions that you can take tonight to approve the report as presented. Again, you've already reviewed the other three, the main sections, but the implementation matrix you have not approved yet or taken action on. You could also approve the three main sections of the report, but conditionally approve the implementation matrix after you have subsequently, or tonight, given us any input or direction that you have, because again, that's a living document, so we're glad to make any changes that you see that need to be there. And then the partner groups will, at the staff level, will talk about those and what we want to see in the final report. Or, you can certainly reject the plan with direction to us on how to revise and make it better. So, at this point, I do want to recognize some folks in the audience who are here tonight. We've got the Chamber of Commerce, Kathy Webber Harding, Wendy Naf singer, and Andy Bay, the Chair of the Economic Council. We had lots of people signed up to attend the first night. This was supposed to be presented to you all, but we had to change the date and lost some of our partner organizations. But again, all of those partners with boards of directors have approved the plan, but are anticipating additional changes tonight, so we'd like to get your input on that.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm going to start out by saying I think this is an excellent plan, and the level of detail that you guys have gone into is just fabulous. I would move that we approve the report and implement the matrix.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, at a high level, it would appear to me that there should be, one of, one of the parts of, like, goal one is to prepare Longmont Organizations for Leadership and Comprehensive Implementation, to include a revisiting of this document, not just as you're reporting, but to look for more suggested changes to the plan as we move forward. It's just part of this, make sure that we get into this cycle where we look at it again, make sure we're doing the right things, and that would be my only suggestion.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that, you know, I've had some discussion both with Harold and Sean today. Just a couple of comment, general comments, and then, you know, Sean and I have agreed that we'll have another discussion offline. Even if it's an internal document, I think the ordering of the way it was presented in our packet needs to be changed up, because if anybody from the general public might be looking at it, it looks like implementation and then marketing. And from everything we've worked on with the consultant, this is not just a marketing plan. It's not just that we're rebranding and repackaging us, that the point is to make significant changes. And so, I would recommend that, you know, we look at just reordering the marketing to follow the business climate, and then put, perhaps, the infrastructure or entrepreneurship and innovation next, and then look at education and workforce, and then marketing and quality of life. The other thing is, I think that there are quite a few items, like in the quality of life section, that need to be reordered somewhere else. The business climate part that didn't come through to me is how vibrant and active a downtown we have. That's not in the business climate, and I think that's one of the most important components to the city of Longmont. You know, when someone comes to visit the LAEC offices, that's there, and that all is buried in quality of life. And it needs to be up front and center, in my opinion, because we also have made significant infrastructure investments in downtown. But I think that, you know, taking out some of the, the quality of life sections would make it, you know, some of those line items are relevant, but some of them, for example, you know, the city doing more neighborhood revitalization, we already, two weeks ago, as council, you know, passed a, a direction to the city staff that we're not going to use CDG money like that in the near future. So, why have it in quality of life when we've already written it out as a council? So, I'll work with you offline to do some tightening up of this, but, yes, we did. Yep, yeah, we did. Sorry. But I think that there's a little bit more tightening up, and then, some of it has a little bit of jargon that even I don't understand, and taking out some of the jargon that might be wording that's kind of the artful inside wording, because this is going to be a document that I imagine, when the kickoff happens on the 23rd, to introduce the concepts in this formula to the general public, and we want to make sure that the general public has, that it's an accessible matrix to people that might be not as, you know, doing the inside lingo. So, those are my, my general comments. So, I guess, you know, I would like to maybe propose a friendly amendment that says, you know, we should conditionally approve the, the matrix and allow some more massaging of it, and then, I mean, I think in general, I agree with the general concepts and everything in here. I just think, you know, there's a couple of items that look like they're typos or edit changes that didn't happen the right way. So, I'm going to offer a friendly amendment that we, we accept it and conditionally approve it.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Since this is an internal document, it will be massaged and cleaned up as, as it goes along. I don't know that we'd need to conditionally approve it. If you approve of the concept, I think that's what we're here to do this evening. So, I, I, I think we should vote on the original motion.
I think Sean mentioned that it was a living document, and we're free to change it as we go, so I kind of agree with Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think also that, when I read it, I don't look at it as any one, I mean, seven goals. I don't view it any one more important than the other one, seven, three, two. And in the event, I don't recall exactly, just to be clear, I am totally 100% for the revitalization of the neighborhoods, and I don't remember us ever instructing city staff to ever not continue that project.
Not to do with CDG money, we made that decision.
Okay, but if that was the, we need to have that discussion for getting rid of that project, because that's not something that I remember voting on. But, yeah, so, I mean, I think we should just go ahead and approve it as we, as it was originally moved, with the understanding that, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Levinson is that we don't want to lose certain things in it. And if it's in it, and we're saying we're voting it and we approve it, everything that's in there is getting approved. And so, that's my understanding.
Yes, sure. Mayor Coombs, if I could add one additional item. We, I, all of the things that Councilmember Levinson and I have spoken about, and the things that she just mentioned, I don't, you know, sense any heartburn from the partners about any of those changes, and I really think we can get those changes made before the rollout event, because again, this document will be changed on a monthly basis. So, I'd be glad to, you know, work with Councilmember Levinson on that.
Okay. I mean, because of the fact that we all agree it's a living document, and you're willing to work, let's just go ahead and vote on the motion. Okay, that passes 7 to 0. You might want to note for the record that Paulie, or Councilmember Christensen, is here, and she missed roll call, so. Okay, I guess it's time for public invited to be heard. First on the list is Brian Bear.
There we go, Red. Okay, Red is on Brian Bear, 7552 North 83rd Street. Came here tonight to talk a little bit about Quiet Zones, but I'm told I have three minutes, so I thought I would give you a quick update on Butterball. As you know, I'm also the developer for the Butterball project, and it's been a couple of months since I've been here and been in front of you. During that time, we've made a lot of progress with the project, been working with staff, and they've been great. Our team, our team of architects and consultants, and have had several pre-op meetings with staff, and we're probably about 30 days away from submitting our formal submittal for the first phase, and so it's going, it's going very well, and we're pretty excited to get that, get that moving forward. On the demolition side, which I know a lot of people are anxious to see what's going on there, we'll start demolition here in the next couple of weeks, and you'll see that building start to come down to make way for the new development. That'll happen mainly on the 150 Main property, which is about six and a half acres. But I am here tonight to talk a little bit about Quiet Zones. I know that tonight you're considering, and in the coming months, you're considering budgeting for next year, and as we've talked about a number of things that are important to the revitalization of the first and main area, you know, we really haven't spent a lot of time talking about Quiet Zones, and, and I know they're important throughout the city, but I have a vested interest in this particular area, and feel that it's, it's very important that when you're putting together the budget for next year and considering items that are included, I would urge you to include funds and resources for actually processing, getting Quiet Zones built and completed. I know there's been a lot of information, a lot of studies that have been done, and hats off to the city for participating in, I think it's called the Quiet Zone Technical Coalition, which is a group of cities, and, but it's time to do something and actually get some Quiet Zones built and done, and so I urge the council to consider that when putting together the budget for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Malory.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name's Sherry Malory. I live at 2113 Rangerue Lane. Longmont is incredibly fortunate to have municipal waste and recycling collection. We're the only municipality in Boulder County to have this highly efficient and economically sound system. Our collection services not only are superior, our fees are the lowest in the county and the second lowest in the entire state. Because our system is publicly operated, fees and volumes collected are transparent. This accountability is invaluable. That said, it's time Longmont expands services and add value to residents by providing curbside compost collection and restructuring our fee system. Last year, the Martin Street Center, Stopoff Center, collected 30 tons of organics. People took the extra time and effort required to bring your yard and food waste to Martin Street. Longmont is lagging behind the cities of Louisville, Lafayette, and Boulder by not providing curbside compost. Surveys have shown that residents want this service and are willing to pay extra for it. Along with curbside collection for compost, Longmont needs an equitable pay-as-you-throw fee structure. Refugees collection should be billed like any other utility. The more people use, the more they pay. This empowers people to save money on their utility bills by providing cost-saving incentives. Through conscientious buying, active recycling, and composting, residents should be able to lessen their trash costs. A robust pay-as-you-throw system would also save the city money by reducing trips to the Erie landfill. Landfill trips are time-consuming, gas-wasting, carbon emission-heavy, and very hard on trucks designed for stop-and-go use. Pairing compost collection with pay-as-you-throw collection rates makes economic sense. 50% of trash residents generate is organic. Providing curbside collection gives people huge opportunities to decrease their trash output and divert their waste responsibly. The associated savings with a pay-as-you-fee, pay-as-you-throw fee structure could help offset the cost of infrastructure needed to provide this service. Longmont residents have repeatedly ranked environment as very high priority on surveys. We've not moved the needle on the waste diversion front for far too long. Sure, there are other pressing issues. That's always the case. To continue to kick the can down the road is irresponsible. We're behind. We need to step up and catch up. People want to do the right thing, and they realize there are costs associated with doing so. Our recent election results demonstrates people's capacity to support worthy programming, with 68% supporting the flood recovery measure. As our leaders, please give us opportunities to examine, modify, and feel good about our personal habits by providing options to deal more responsibly with our waste stream. It's a triple win. Residents feel good while saving money, the city saves on hauling and entry costs, and our earth benefits by getting less trashed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. I guess that ends public invited to be heard.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on second reading is Ordinance 201446, the Belfort Ordinance Making Additional Appropriations for the Expenses and Liabilities of the City of Longmont for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2014. And there is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Is there any discussion from council on this? Councilmember Finley?
Uh, no discussion. I would move Ordinance 201446.
Oh, excuse me. I guess we do. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to speak on this item at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Now, I would move the passage of Ordinance 201446.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
Next item is Ordinance 201447, the Belfort Ordinance Conditionally Approving the Royal Park Rezoning from Mixed Use to Public, Generally Located North of the St. Brain River, West of Main Street, South of Boston Avenue, and East of Pratt Parkway. And again, we do not have a formal staff presentation.
Okay. Is there any questions from council before I open it up to public hearing? All right. All right, um, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Oh, Councilmember Christensen?
Sorry, I have a question. Um, there's a small house that I believe is part of this parcel that's on Main, not house, but building on Main Street. It looks like that on the map, and I drove past, and it looks like that. There is a small building. Wouldn't it be wise to keep that as something we might want to have as a way to make money on Main Street? Is that, is that building part of that? Do you know what I mean? It's just north of the river.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember, uh, Christensen, the building in question is directly north of the St. Brain Greenway, and it used to be the vet clinic.
Yeah.
And, so, that is located in the area of where the channel widening is going to have to take place, so that building's going to have to be removed.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Bagley?
Did you close the public invited to be heard or not yet?
No, not yet.
Oh, didn't open it yet?
Not officially.
We're just anxious.
Okay. I know, I'll, since we had that question from Councilmember Christensen, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Bagley?
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. With that, I move that we adopt Ordinance 201447.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Sarah. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is Ordinance 201448, a bill for an ordinance amending Title IV of the Longmont Municipal Code on Revenue and Finance by creating the Village at the Peaks COP revenue, special revenue fund, and we do not have a, uh, staff presentation on that.
Okay, are there any questions from council before I open it, the public hearing? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 20144B. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of Ordinance 201448.
It's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
And the next item is your consent agenda. First item is Ordinance 201449, a bill for an ordinance approving vested rights and a development agreement for the Twin Peaks Small Subdivision, generally located east of Hoover Street, south of Nelson Road, and north of Ken Pratt Boulevard. Public hearing and second reading for this ordinance is scheduled for September 23rd. Item 9B is Ordinance 201450, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a, uh, nineteen forty-nine square foot electrical easement on Lot 1 Horizon Parkway Replat F, generally located south of Chrisland Drive and west of Main Street. Public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for September 23rd. Item 9C is a Resolution 201479, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding for Resiliency Planning. Item 9D is Resolution 201480, authorizing the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, or Designee, to enter into agreements, leases, and exchanges concerning reused water, rental, surplus raw water rental, rental, and water rights during the 2015 Water Year. Item 9E is Resolution 201481, approving the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City and Boulder County Concerning Repair and Remediation from Flooding. Item 9F is Resolution 201482, approving a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for partial reimbursement of the cost of bulletproof vests. Item 9G is, uh, to accept two capital improvement program amendments approved by the city manager for MUS 53 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Improvements and MUS 151 Interceptor F Rehabilitation. And Item 9H is approve five capital improvement program amendments, uh, D-39 St. Brain Channel Improvements, PR 5B St. Brain Greenway, PR 1696 Sandstone Ranch Greenway and Ponds Repairs, PR 56 Park Buildings Rehab and Replacement, and MUS 53 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation and Improvements. And staff does not have, need, have a need to pull any items.
Councilmember Moore, I'd like to pull item D, please. D is a no. Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Finley?
I'd like to move the consent agenda, agenda minus D.
All right, the consent agenda minus D has been moved and seconded, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And Item G is the, um, raw water lease agreements, and Ken Houston is here to answer your questions.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
My question revolves around our recent decision to continue to fight the fracking in Longmont, and my, is, so the question specifically is, how much water do we currently have under contract that's going to fracking operations?
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor, Members of Council. Ken Houston, Water Resources Administrator. There's a little bit of, uh, explanation I need to give into that answer. Um, you know, we don't have a specific, um, lease that, that is directly tied to fracking. We do have a lease, uh, we have, uh, some long-term leases, um, that, uh, one of those leases is to ANW Water Service, uh, which is headquartered out of Fort Lupton. They have groundwater wells in the, uh, South Platte Aquifer, at the Fort Lupton area, that they pump, um, and use, they provide water service to anybody who wants water service. One, you know, one of their customers is the oil and gas industry, and so some of their water would go there. Um, the water, the release to ANW Water Service is for augmentation of those wells. When they pump water out of those wells, they have to augment that water use, and so our water is delivered down St. Brain Creek to the South Platte River and augments, um, that water that was pumped from those wells. That's about a five to six hundred acre foot a year lease. It was a twenty-year lease, it's not quite halfway through, so there's still a number of years on that, but that was, um, entered into, uh, you know, well before, um, really fracking even was just talked about. Um, the other, uh, long-term leases we have are mostly for things like feedlots and agricultural producers, so we, so really don't have much interaction, uh, with the oil and gas industry at this point. This particular ordinance, um, really what was, what it sets up right now is gives us the ability to enter into exchanges, which we do, to, um, increase our water, our potable water supply with exchanges out of our wastewater treatment plant. Don't have any in front of us right now, but if we, you know, have some opportunities, we try to do that. So hopefully I answered that question sufficiently enough, uh, to make it clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, our commitment to the fracking ban and our commitment to not supplying water to fracking companies would be, was the point I wanted to make, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the fracking ban is fracking in the City of Longmont. This has nothing to do with that. I've moved Resolution 201480.
Okay, then move, Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, my understanding is, but just to be clear, regardless of what the leases are for, we're basically saying we're not going to entertain anything until April 15th of 2015, fracking or otherwise.
Mayor Potem, that's correct. Any leases, we wouldn't incur until after we come back. Every spring, we come up with our water supply and drought management plan, and it'll be after we talk to council about this.
It looks like we'll have a healthy debate on, uh, April 16th of next year.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, um, your next item of business is for the Urban Renewal Authority, so once you recess, I will read that resolution into the record.
Okay. So, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we recess as the City Council and, and, uh,
Convene.
Convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. Thank you.
Second.
All right.
Interesting to see someone else be there.
Yes. Let's vote.
Oh, well, you know, I couldn't read it, took a nap.
Okay, that passes seven to zero, so now we were, uh, in session as the Longmont Urban Renewal.
And your first item of business is Resolution LURA 201408, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the authority for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. We do not have a formal staff presentation, but there is staff in the audience to answer questions.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, head of the Urban Renewal Authority Board. Last time we saw a budgetary item, it was for a quarter of a million dollars to do oversight at the job site. What are we spending forty-three thousand sixty-nine dollars for? Says professional services, that's what we had the last time, was professional services.
Is this on? Okay. Um, so, uh, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, so, so this amount will, um, it, it's, um, taking us to the amount, the one point three, one point, one point one oh three million dollars that was, um, included in, um, all of the details of the, um, COPs. Um, it, it's just, is taking us from a urban renewal authority, um, perspective to that full one point one appropriation. Um, it will be spent on things like legal fees. Um, the two hundred and fifty that you saw previously was for the, um, uh, a project manager, if you will, um, for the, um, the actual site construction, demolition and construction. This, um, covers all of the legal fees and all that other type of stuff associated with, um, expenses from the Urban Renewal Authority.
And then, um, I thought that one of the things that we were going to be very efficient about was to pay back the fleet fund as quickly as possible, and so part of this is interest to the fleet fund. When do we anticipate paying the fleet fund back?
It has already been done.
Okay. All right, so that's what, all righty. And then, um, so you're keeping some kind of a, um, a running list, and what happens when we hit, um, a million oh three?
A million one oh three.
Yes, yeah. I mean, if, when we're one penny over, you know, we're, we're, are we getting close to being one penny over yet?
Do you know where we're at today?
Yeah, we're, we're not.
Not close yet.
We're not close to being over that yet.
Okay, we have enough beans left in the pot then. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move R LURA 2014 dash zero eight.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember, excuse me, can we preempt him? Councilmember, Commissioner Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Chairman, uh, King of Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. The authority of the authority. I guess my only question is, uh, just a little lesson in civics for me. We've already approved it. Why are we, why do you have to vote again?
It's the appropriations aspect of this that requires you to vote again.
So in other words, we voted as a council to spend the money, but now we're appropriating it to LURA. Okay, all right.
And, and also in this, um, as we look at this, we've, um, it, it looks like we're going to be, in terms of the, the construction management of the mall and the oversight, we're, we're looking at utilizing existing staff, and so we think that there's the opportunity that there may be some, potential for some savings, um, and, and we'll be, uh, monitoring that as we move forward.
Commissioner Santos? All right, let's, let's vote then. That passes seven to zero. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. So now we're reconvened as the Longmont City Council.
And your next item and final item is the 2015 Budget Presentation, and Teresa Malloy will introduce this item.
You know, uh, can we take like, like a five-minute break before we? All right, let's just adjourn for five minutes. I'm Teresa Malloy, the Budget Manager, and this evening, we're going to kick off our 2015 Budget Presentation, um, and tonight is the night we're going to talk to you about our CIP. So we, um, pre-recorded our presentation, so my comments are going to be very brief. Also want to let you know that we have other staff members, um, in the audience to answer questions, if you have those, um, but, but we really don't have a formal presentation, um, for this evening. So, um, I do want to, um, point out to council and, um, members of the public who may be watching, that, um, uh, if anyone is interested in viewing our CIP or our proposed budget, it is on our city website. We also now have, um, hard copies at the city clerk's office, as well as in the library. So our 2015 to 2019 proposed capital improvement program, for the full five years, is a hundred and seventy-nine point four million. Of that, fifty-seven point four million is what we have included in our 2015 proposed budget. Um, so your council communication and, um, the pre-recorded presentation, um, showed you the breakdown, um, by, um, project category. Uh, so, um, if, if you've got, um, questions on any of those, we'd be happy to answer those. Um, also, um, Attachment A to your, uh, council communication, um, beginning on page S4, um, is an update of our current, our 2014 funded CIP projects. Um, our presentation did touch on a few of these as well, um, but if you have questions on, on either the, the projects we talked about during our presentation, or any other projects that you see in Attachment A, um, we'd be happy to, um, try to answer those for you. I do want to spend just a couple minutes talking about the, um, Public Improvement Fund for you. Um, so, um, council will recall that this is the fund where our non earmarked sales and use tax, um, uh, goes. So, so it's this fund and our general fund that that non earmarked sales and use tax gets split between. Our, um, ideal split is, um, eighty-five fifteen, with eighty-five percent of that, um, going to the general fund, and fifteen percent of that going to the Public Improvement Fund. For the past several years, um, we have been, um, not at the eighty-five fifteen, but at, um, a, um, much lower amount or, or different amount, um, at the eighty-eight point three percent to the general fund, and eleven point seven percent to the Public Improvement Fund. One of the, um, uh, things that we have talked to, to you all about is, um, part of our budget reset is to restore that split back to the eighty-five fifteen. Um, in our 2015 proposed budget, we have, um, begun to, to shift that closer to eighty-five fifteen, um, and there- is 216,869 additional revenue that we were able to shift towards the Public Improvement Fund. So that now puts our split at 87,7 and 12,3. In addition to that 200,000 of ongoing sales and use tax going now to the Public Improvement Fund, what we have also included in our proposed budget is a one-time transfer, so fund balance from the general fund of 539,539, we like uneven numbers, of one-time dollars that we can transfer from the general fund to the Public Improvement Fund to help us fund, from the projects that are in our 2015 proposed budget from the Public Improvement Fund. So this fund is our major source of funds for not only parks, but our public buildings, our general fund services, public buildings. And council will recall that in 2014, with the implementation of the Parks and Greenway Maintenance Fee, we have been able to now address many of our needs in the Parks area. We do still have some pretty hefty needs in the public building area. A couple of those needs, we did talk to you about in our pre-recorded presentation, and that is the Civic Center Rehab Project that Jeff Cedar spoke to you about. That is an unfunded project, and it is definitely a need that we have not been able to find revenue to cover. The other need is really for some additional storage needs, both for public safety, their evidence and seized property, they need some additional space to be able to store that. And then our museum collection storage, right now is in a temporary facility, and we need a long-term storage facility. So Wes Jessup talked to you a little bit about that. So that's the extent of my brief presentation this evening. As I did mention, we have lots of staff members here this evening to answer questions for you, either on our current 2014 funded projects, or what we're proposing to fund in 2015 through 2019, so.
Well, first off, I'd like to say thanks for making that presentation available to us. It's going to save us a lot of time tonight to be able to go over that on our own time, so I appreciate that. There is a very small typo on page S2, we have your pie chart, and we've got the, all the different funds totaling the 57,47. It should say total funded for 2015, not 2014.
That is correct, Mayor, it should say 2015.
But, threw it out, did a great job. Councilmember Christensen.
Good spotting. I have a question about the museum's storage. I thought that they were moving their storage facility over to the former RTD building, is that not true?
That was something that we were evaluating.
Oh, okay.
We were having conversations with RTD.
Oh, okay.
The cost of that facility, and what they wanted, did make sense. We're in the process of evaluating other options.
Oh, okay.
In terms of where we relocate that, everything that they have in storage.
I see, yeah, they do, they really do need more storage, thank you.
You know, I thought that was pretty smart, once you realize that the public safety needs the same type of storage in terms of humidity, temperature control, security that the museum does, they have the exact same requirements, to combine those two in the same building with separate entries and walls, I mean, that's great collaborative thinking, so. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is insignificant in the, you know, scheme of our budget, but the old Firehouse Art Studio domestic water heater, that's not being fixed this year and postponed, or it wasn't fixed last year and is being postponed to this year? How you like that question, huh? Yeah. Stump the weasel lady right there. Not to imply that you're a weasel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Barbara McGrane, Business Services Manager, Public Works and Natural Resources. So Buildings is under me in my area, and that was postponed because the need, it's still going to last a little bit longer before we need to replace it, and we needed to use it, that money somewhere else.
We're not approving money for that water heater, correct?
That was this year's money.
That's what I mean, so it's, we're approving it to fix it next year? Right now, we're saying it doesn't need to be fixed?
It doesn't need to be fixed right now or next year, and there were other higher priority projects that moved up.
All right, cool. Then the other question I have is, talking about swimming pools on page S7, the, I have no, yeah, replacing the gas flotation system, I'm pro-clean water when we're doing our laps over there. My question is, the observation room ceiling and curtains, I know that we've talked about replacing Centennial Pool, my understanding is, we approved a feasibility study, so there's a lot of questions out there, and so my concern would be paying to put in a new observation room ceiling and curtains, but in a couple of years, we're going to, you know, get rid of it and upgrade, so. My question is, do we really need an observation room ceiling and new curtains out there at Centennial? Before we know what's going to happen?
Members of council, Jeff Friesner, Recreation Manager, I don't know. So, right now, it looks horrible. We have a contractor that's coming in to rehang the curtains, and we're trying to postpone it as long as possible. Excuse me, facility maintenance has gone in and replaced some of the ceiling tiles, so as of right now, we're not planning on doing that until we get the results of the feasibility study.
Okay, cool. And so if it's just ceiling tiles, it's like, what, two and a half bucks a tile? Okay, all right, cool, thank you. Counting pennies here, that's my, that's the point, see those pennies being counted?
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of general questions, and then I guess this is a kind of a procedural question as well. When we're looking at how we calculate things by formula in the general fund budget, you know, things that are a certain percent, when we're doing a general fund transfer from the general fund, one-time transfer from general fund to Public Improvement Fund of that 539,539, when we're looking at the 1.6% we set aside for Human Services, at what point in the budget do we set the 1.6? Because this became kind of an issue last year, we had a discussion, that, you know, the money is not really staying in the general fund, and then it actually diminishes how much we're transferring internally, and we're losing a maximum benefit while we could just reorganize the formula to accommodate the 539,539, and, you know, get the maximum value. So I'm just wondering, at what point in the general fund do we look at for those formulas? After everything's taken out?
So Mayor and Councilmember Levison, so that 1.6% is based on, is 1.6% of our ongoing revenues, so it is, it does not include the 539,000, since that is one-time fund balance, so it's not calculated based on that. It really is calculated based on our ongoing revenues, and those are the revenues that we use to cover our ongoing expenses.
Okay, I just seem to remember the language is, that it's 1.6% of the amount of money that we budget in the general fund.
Correct, 1.6% of our ongoing revenue budget.
Okay, and that's different than the general fund number that we're talking about here? I'm just clarifying.
That is correct. What this 539,000 is, is available fund balance that we didn't need in the general fund to cover one-time expenses, so now we're transferring it to the Public Improvement Fund to help essentially backfill, because we can't have not been able to adjust that split back to 85-15.
Okay, and then, again, you know, I'll just have to, it's kind of a big chunk to take the CIP all in one night, but I'd also really like to focus the CIP work on the funded projects that are really going to make measurable difference to people. And I know that when we were, when I was reviewing the film, you know, we're talking about those top transportation projects, that, you know, people are going to love it when it's done, but they're going to be hating us for a while, and I know Harold's been mentioning that, and I mention it everywhere I go. But I think that we have to also look, when I was looking at the replacement, you know, missing sidewalk stuff, to make sure that we spend our money the most effectively. If we have a place where, you know, we don't notice that anybody, there's really a true need for a sidewalk, if it's not necessary for, you know, safe routes to school, I'd like to kind of, looking at it as the transportation mode, to be able to have the resources available to hit those top projects, to get them done too. And then as far as some of the work aligning with parks and equipment replacement, I don't know if there's an internal structure that, Kim Sugar may want to come down and comment on this, to see as we're going through the CIP with what's funded, to relate it to those top priorities that came out of the master planning process, just to look at things as a whole. Are we keeping track of stuff like that too?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. Yes, Councilmember Levison, we are tracking that. The projects that are funded this year are the projects that are in the first tier of the projects in the master plan, plus the flood projects, which we acknowledged in the master plan as well.
And then I have one special request in the park funding area, is that Athlottor Park near Indian Peaks Elementary School, their fourth grade class is working on a community engagement project as part of their schoolwork, to collaborate with the city, and so I see in the presentation and the notes that you're looking at having the park work start after school's out, which is great, but it would be really lovely if we could get it done by the early part of September, so that those fifth graders, when they're in fourth grade, they've worked really hard, but in fifth grade, when they're kings of the school, they can educate all the younger underclassmen to say, you know, this is what happens when you do your civics project in fourth grade. You get a nice new park, and you understand how it goes on and everything. So I would just request that we look at, especially those projects where some timing is flexible, to see if we can't, you know, get some things done very timely, when it's really important for the loop around with the process. And then, there was something else I was going to ask, I can't remember now. And as far as the issue of quiet zones, we're not really thinking of reallocating a bunch of funding to start on quiet zones this year, are we?
No, I mean, when you look at the needs that exist across the board, in our CIP and what's unfunded, and we've communicated this in some discussions, it's really what we're trying to do is focus our funding on the highest needs that we have right now in our community. Another thing that comes into play is, you see mixed in within the CIP projects is also the match associated with the flood recovery, and what we're having to do, and frankly, the stress that it plays on some of the funds in terms of some of the timing, and so all of those things need to be taken into account. In addition, we also know that the rulemaking is going on, and so we also want to see what comes out of that discussion, because you, one of the things that I've also communicated is, you don't want to necessarily spend a lot of money on something you may not have to spend a lot of money on based on that conversation, so that's something that we're really looking at.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
This is just a small point. For D37, the oligarchy ditch, it doesn't say, there's no update on when it might start again. Can you give me an idea of what's happening with that, or when you think that might be improved upon?
Someone?
Quick check in, excuse me, Nick Wolf from Engineering Services Manager. At the best, we'll begin and start looking at some of the design of that in the next couple of years. There is unfortunately, a great deal of right-of-way acquisition that has to happen in order for that to happen. That oligarchy ditch and those uncompleted areas, while it would be a great trail, and it's one of our high priorities as far as a trail goes, comes down to a lot of backyards, and so there's actually, we're going to have to meet with a lot of neighbors, look at that, and so it's a relatively major design, and not something that's on our shorter-term process until we get more of the damaged greenways reopened up, or those, before, we're going to try and get that finished before we start extending into the new areas.
I just remembered my other question. As part of the requested facility for museum storage, are we looking at any update to the acquisition and hold policy for 3D objects, especially, I mean, years ago, when I was on the Citizens Advisory Board, we almost never turned down anything that came in, and, right, and I think Councilmember Bagley just mentioned, they almost never do, they never do. I'm really interested to know, a lot of museums, when I lived in San Antonio, once a year, the museum had a huge sale, it was really good to go to, you could pick up some very unusual things, but, I mean, it might look, we might have to, you know, we're not the Smithsonian, we're not endowed like that, but I know you would want to be, if we could ship some of our stuff to the Smithsonian, let them store it for us for free, if we could find a way to do that, that would be great. However, is there a way, though, we can look at what's too fragile to keep, what's worth investing? For example, if we had to make the decision, and you're in the storage room, if you had 10 people, what would you grab to save? If you had the flood coming through, the fire, whatever? You know, what could you save, you know, what would be the top priority, that condition and meaning to the community, what could we do to, you know, keep the collection manageable?
Right, so Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Wes Jessup, the museum director, and to answer your first question, we actually do, we actually do turn away things.
Before it gets to the board to review then?
Even when it gets to the board, we return things, so. We've been doing that for the last couple of years, and just most, you know, I can give a bunch of examples of things that we've decided, you know, this is interesting, but really not something we want to step in and invest to preserve and conserve for all of those coming years, so.
Even when we ask them to, okay. Right, and I guess, yeah, the entrance to Longmont signs, yes, I remember that request too.
Don't get me started.
Yeah, I know. And I just, I don't know whether or not there's been an assessment done lately of everything in storage, to make sure that it still abides, if the board was reviewing things as, you know, you go through your attic to move.
Right.
You know, this is the city's attic, if you will.
Yes, I wouldn't call it an attic, I, you know, we really, I think we strive to get the most important and best objects that document the city's history, and we're in a long-term project right now, I think we'll be finished before the end of this year, of actually getting out every piece of information we have into the database, which will help us to assess objects that, you know, yeah, that may be duplicates, they may not be originals, things like that, that we may want to look at down the line, you know, for future planning, you know, I don't want to say deaccession, but that may, you know, there may be some things we decide to do, deaccession.
Because we could just, you know, and I know there's a lot of stuff, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we do not aspire to be a museum of stuff. We want good, we want good things, objects, historical things, that really document the city's history, so we're not interested in stuff.
Well, the other part of the city's history, it could be that there's stuff that ends up here, that might be great stuff for us to own, to lend to other people, so then they can lend us stuff that we want too. You know, like if you had a... You know, like if you had a Picasso, it may not be the history of Longmont, but it would be nice to have a Picasso that we could lend out, that then other people could pay us to, you know, show or borrow, so, yeah. I'm not donating Picasso anytime soon, I don't have one.
Okay, so thank you, I guess now it's time for...
Mayor, do you have a couple of comments? So obviously on this, we're looking at how we can bring the needs of different departments together, specifically police storage and the museum, and that's going to be really connected to how we handle the building that the cheese importer is in, and then what opportunities we have. One of the things that we are looking at is we don't want to continue paying rent on a facility, and we want to see how we can maximize our dollars and get a facility that can handle this increased need of storage. When we look at the CIP in general, I do want to point out a couple of things to you. There will be a presentation, I believe it's at the next meeting, on the water and the water capital improvement needs. We're going to go more in-depth on that, but I will say that that's something that is on our radar screen as we look to the future. The other thing that I really wanted to point out, and we mentioned this in the text, is the evaluation that we're doing on the facilities. Specifically, we just started on this facility, and we're bringing some structural engineers in to do some more in-depth analysis on this facility and what we need, but what I can tell you is, based on the preliminary reports that I've been receiving, there is going to be a significant need in rehabilitating our facilities, and we have more work to do. We need to move over to the Safety and Justice Building, and we need to move over into the majority of our facilities to really see what it is that we need to do and how we need to approach that. I will say that that has, based on some of the information I've received, is starting to rise to the top of my list, because obviously we need to make sure that our facilities are safe, but we need to invest the dollars, the appropriate dollars in these facilities to make sure that they can last over a longer period of time, and as you know, as we've talked about some of these things in the capital improvement plan, we haven't necessarily allocated those buttons that we need to extend the life expectancies of these facilities. It's the same conversation that we had when we talked about Centennial Pool. It's the same conversation we had when we talked about our parks. And so I do want to take this from my radar screen and put it directly on your radar screen, and know that we are going through a comprehensive analysis, and we're going to be moving into other facilities and evaluating it, but this is going to be a major point of discussion in future budgets, because we need to start investing in our facilities to make sure that we can extend the life expectancy, and we don't want to be caught in a position where we have major issues in these facilities, and so we will be bringing that report to you, to you all when it's finished.
All right, thank you. Well, I guess with that, it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Does anybody in the public like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close, final call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Again, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I just wanted to bring up that there has been a birthday this week that we should acknowledge, our esteemed city manager Harold Dominguez. Had a birthday yesterday, his daughter's birthday is today, and I think we should sing "Happy Birthday," and then I'll, then I'll go on to my next song. Are you ready?
Yep.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Harold, happy birthday to you. I also wanted to mention business of the week. My business this week is the Longmont Humane Society, because this Saturday, a pause in the park, three-mile dog walk, which would take you about two minutes, five-k fun run and festival will be occurring. The Longmont Humane Society is a great asset to our community, not only do they have dog adoption, but they also have training and a well-pat clinic and a thrift store you can go shop at, at seven-hundred Ken Pratt Boulevard. So if you're in need of a pet, Kurt Finley, you can go to the Longmont Humane Society and pick one up.
I'll give you one of my dogs.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just wanted to give Council a heads-up, youth council is going to challenge the city council to who can collect the most food for Halloween, so just thought should put that on your radar so you can start collecting cans now.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. And another couple of items, the Colorado Municipal League is initiating a new program this year called Cities and Towns Make a Difference or Matter, and the week's celebration is going to be in October, and I'm going to see if we can't get whatever their official proclamation is on our agenda. And then also, I would like to see if council members would be open to doing something extra, that, like going to an elementary school and talking to a class, or perhaps, one idea I thought of which would maybe be fun, is if each of us picked a department and a staff member in the department, whether it be the director of the department or some other staff member, and went over Channel Eight, and maybe had a five-minute discussion about what they do and how we appreciate what they do and the role that we play. A lot of other cities have already come up with some really creative ideas, and I don't want to be left behind, because I think we have such a fantastic city, and we do so many good things to make our little corner of the world fantastic. So looking for your input, but also just mentioning that as a board member, you know, they asked if we could, as board members, get a little something good going for this first go-around. Then the second thing is that I was on a federal update legislative phone call with National League of Cities last week, and there were three items that were brought up, that National League of Cities will be engaging member cities to help with advocacy, reauthorization of the transportation bill, the revamp of the Marketplace Fairness Act, and then also the current EPA rulemaking on waters of the United States, which I'll get some additional information on from National League of Cities and work with staff to see if we can't see what our position on that, what we're going to develop as our position. And then I'm also encouraging everybody, if you haven't got your stuff signed up for National League of Cities for November, there's going to be some other deadlines coming up, I think. Excuse me?
Keynote speaker.
I didn't see the keynote speaker. Who's the keynote speaker?
The guy who used to do...
The guy that used to do what?
Need to press.
Oh. So, and then the last thing I'd like to do is send a shout-out to the fourth-grade classes at Indian Peaks Elementary School, and encourage them in their civics class and government class work around participating with the city on the redevelopment or the revitalization of Athlauter Park.
Well, I'd like to recognize the Longmont Progans football team and their coach, Doug Johnson. I guess they just won a big, got a lot of recognition, they were on the Today Show for the community service work they did out in lines for the flood relief, and they also restacked a bunch of hay at someone's barn, and anyway, it's pretty neat that we have coaches that are teaching these kids not only to play football and teamwork, but to be good citizens, and, you know, I just think it really reflects well on our school system and on our community to have that type of leadership in our schools, so thank you, Longmont Progans and Coach Johnson.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm surprised no one mentioned it. This Saturday, the thirteenth, nine o'clock, the city will commemorate the flood anniversary, and it will be at the Saint Rain Creek Improvement Project right by, trying to read this real fast, Martin Street Bridge at the south end, and refreshments will be served. We'll hope to see everyone out there. It's kind of a solemn event, but it's also, again, to show that Longmont is back, back from the flood recovery, so, and we're still keep, and we're still going strong, and there's still a lot of work to do, but we'll still, I know it's been raining a lot, I've been getting a lot of questions about, how are we doing? We're, you know, there's still work to be done, but as long as we don't get several days of a lot of rain, I think we're doing just fine. Yeah, and, you know, I know a lot of folks, in fact, I just know a couple that just moved from Longmont, that just moved to the Phoenix area, so, yeah, this is a bad time for them, so my thoughts to the people in Arizona.
Okay, City Attorney, any comments?
Yes, Mayor, Council, want to also remind you, the rollout of the advance Longmont is going to occur on the twenty-third at three o'clock at the Chamber of Commerce, and so want to invite everyone to attend that. I also wanted to let you know that almost a year after the flooding, I have just signed something that, I've signed a document that is basically opening up the Saint Rain River. What we were working on is really making sure that a lot of the areas where we had pilings and things that were dangerous for folks, that they were corrected, and we recently finished that, and so I signed that today, and so the Saint Rain River is open, the restriction is lifted.
So that means we can float down there on air tubes now?
Well, what I would say is in this is, we would still, we would still really want to talk to folks and really exercise a lot of caution in there, because what we do know is that there were a lot of things like barbed wire and some other stuff that we may not have been able to see, but we have taken care of those major issues. One of the last ones, if you remember looking at the, some of the damage just off of Boston behind Left Hand, there were some pilings that were exposed, those have been covered with rock, and we've had some work out there, and the trail was, some concrete laid on the trail there, so we have opened it, but really want to reiterate one more time, a lot of caution, and really that caution should exist even if we were in normal conditions, but we just want to say it one more time, just have a lot of caution if you're in the river or around the river.
Thank you. City Attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.